This conference will now be recorded.
Ready to get started. I'm sure Commissioner Quayle would start, will join us as soon as he's able. So Teresa, you ready? I'm hearing a little feedback, but I'll start. Okay, today it's 5:01 and we are July 8th, 2020. And this is our Board of Commissioners work session. So work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and to listen to the discussion, but there's generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board are welcome to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings. So we have, the first part of this meeting will be board communication, which we have about 10 minutes. And I don't yet see Commissioner Quayle yet, but let's start with the check-in.
Mark.
You do see Mark, okay.
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, hi, Mark. Well, since we're waiting for you, we'll let you say hi, howdy first. So we're just checking in now for the work session. Do you have any?
I don't. I'm just, just leaving work, so I'm actually walking the door. So I'll listen to everybody.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks for, I'm glad you're able to attend. Commissioner Thompson, would you like to go next?
Yes, ma'am. Well, I just had an email from Mark Labhart, who's been working on tide gates and flood control issues. I don't know if you remember, it was, it was over a year ago that Dr. Suter from Oregon State had a presentation, but he was too busy to come and see us. So I just got an email from him with his presentation. I sent that to Mark Labhart. Mark Labhart said, yes, go with it, share it widely. So I spoke with the county manager, so pretty soon we'll be having a presentation about tide gates and flood control and all that kind of stuff. So I'm really happy and excited about that. Still working on broadband. Tomorrow at Coal PAC, we're going to form a Columbia, Clatsop, Tillamook County broadband action team that is tailored to our region and will empower us and yield broadband, we hope. It's just a question of how long and how we get it paid for. So that's exciting. I'm still continuing to work on childcare. That's a slower go because the state, the state people are waiting for the feds to decide whether or not they're going to give us more money. And so the state is reluctant to give money out to locals until they know what the feds are going to do for them. So that's in this kind of confusing holding pattern. But still talking to people about it. I understand from Liz Dent that there is an open meeting on Monday afternoon, the 13th, about the Habitat Conservation Plan. And so I think that'd be interesting for all the county commissioners because it'll be educational. I think education is a great thing. Friday is the Oregon Housing Stability Council. I plan on attending that. I think Congresswoman Bonamici's got a, maybe she had that today. Maybe I missed that. All right. So maybe I missed a meeting. Anyhow, Stacy from Senator Merkley's office is coming to the Coal PAC meeting tomorrow. So we'll have some federal observation there that I hope will turn into money sooner or later as well. I assume AOC will be doing stuff later in the month. I also had a conversation with Multnomah County Commissioner Jayapal about issues of common interest between Multnomah and Clatsop County. I turned a little green with envy when she said they had an economist on staff. So I wish we had an economist on staff, but lacking that, we've got what we've got, which is excellent in its own regard. So that's my report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Anyone else like to come check in and just say hello? Or anything else? We're just, we're just kind of checking in here. Commissioner Webb, would you like to go next?
Um, yes. We had a Northwest Housing Authority Board meeting recently. I continue to be a little perplexed about the fact that we're not receiving information from the staff at NOAA, but the county manager has promised me that he's going to work on that as well. We're still, we still haven't really been delivered. I think I told you all a month or two ago about the fact that left over from an earlier lawsuit, we have, the county will receive somewhere short of a million dollars to be used for affordable housing. And we're still trying to get information from the NOAA staff about that. And we hope that we are moving toward the dissolution of the Clatsop Housing Authority. But once again, we're having a little trouble getting communication back from NOAA about that. We also had a very productive meeting with the Workforce Development Board, Northwest Oregon Works. And they, I learned a couple of things, one of which is that the Oregon Works office in Astoria is the only one in our five-county region which actually has stayed open, even though all the other offices are functioning with people working from home. But they, they're feeling, they're feeling good, they say. But I'm still hearing widespread issues in the community about the lack of receipt of people who have applied for uninsured benefits and simply, you know, all the horror stories. And I'm sure all of you have heard about, you know, seven-hour waits on the telephone and things like that. So they're promising us that, that they hope that that will be repaired. We, there's kind of a good news and bad news.
Commissioner Webb, may I interrupt you for a moment?
Sure.
This is, we've got two minutes left for this portion of the time. We will have Commissioner check-in time during the regular meeting, but for the work, for the work meeting, this is mostly just to, just to kind of check in briefly.
I'm sorry.
So can you finish up something real quick or can you carry it on to the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, let's do that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Commissioner Nebiker, do you have anything you'd like to check in with us for?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. One, does anybody know why the mercy ship was going up the Columbia River? And the other question is, well, I did receive some correspondence from people, this is about the election in May, that they were not able to drop off their ballots in Warrington. And some of them weren't able to vote because they waited to the last minute and they didn't know what to do. So I just wanted to ask if the county clerk could check on that so that going forward, people could be notified ahead of time? I don't, or these people didn't, weren't notified or they just didn't know?
Yes, this was an unusual year because of the drop boxes, Commissioner. We're already working on the November election and we will have, I think the number is seven outside drop boxes that will be available. So part of the challenge was that by the time COVID came and the city halls closed, which is where the drop boxes were, didn't give us time to actually install outside secure drop boxes. So that was part of the challenge, but we will definitely follow up, so.
Thank you, County Manager. Commissioner Webb, you look like you might have an answer to the mercy ship going up the river?
Yes, yes. She's going to Portland, I'm sure she's there by now, for some apparently not, apparently relatively minor repairs. I think retrofitting some systems and things like that. So she was headed to the dockyards.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't, I don't have, other than just to say hello. So let's move on to the next bit on our work session, which is concerning the agenda. Does anyone have any questions that they didn't get a chance to talk to the staff about, about the agenda? Or any comments on the agenda for this six o'clock meeting?
I just wanted to add that part about we're going to have more information soon about tide gates and flood control, just for general information.
That's very helpful. Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Okay, so hearing none, I will assume that the agenda for this six o'clock meeting is fine. And let's, let's go on to the topics. The first one on the list is public health, public health update. We've got about 10 minutes for that. And who will be giving the public health update today?
Mike McNichol is on the phone and he will be providing it, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners, this is Mike McNichol. And yeah, so first I want to thank all of you for your effort and signing on to the op-ed piece. That was, it made all of our staff feel really supported and really kind of put a, you know, in a, now that we're staff a little bit weary, that really put a bounce back in their steps. So I really thank you for all that. That's, that was fantastic. Second is that as of today, we now have 55 cases of COVID positive tests in Clatsop County. The last seven or eight, the last five or six have been actually from community spread. They are not specific seafood related. There's a community spread going on now and it's, you know, we're going to be seeing probably more and more cases now that it's getting out and people are out and the weather's good and probably not everyone is following the social distancing and mask gathering and mask-wearing recommendations. So in light of that, we're going to see more cases. So the, we're also still continuing to help put people in quarantine. We had an interesting couple of cases where we've actually helped some people get into the river shore end. They stay there for the duration and they left. There were no issues and we were very happy about that. But I would know you have, probably have some questions. If you have any questions, I'd be free to answer them.
Okay, Commissioner Nebiker, you had a question?
Yes, Mike, how are you feeling?
Oh, well, thank you for asking. Yeah, you know, it's one of those, I'm one of those lucky people who had the virus, but didn't seem to have any outward symptoms. Although I noted that one of the potential symptoms is, you know, damaging your brain. And maybe that was me because I still like to do public health. But anyway, so I will move on from that. But yeah, I feel fine. I went back to work on Monday after two weeks of isolation and staff were happy to see me and I was happy to see them.
Thank you. Excellent.
Mike, I have a question. There's all these different terms with COVID. There's outbreaks, there's individual positives, there's community spread. Is there a difference, once we start talking about community spread, on how we handle this?
No, there's no, so the difference between outbreak is when we can pinpoint two or more people from the same source. So like, for example, if we have a business that had a couple of cases and then those cases turned into more cases, that would be an outbreak. A community spread is when it's just in the community and it seems to be jumping around from person to person, no real cause and effect. Some people just seem to be getting it and then they're spreading around themselves. And through our contact tracing, we can kind of figure out how it's community versus business. There's some folks who went on vacation and came back and had COVID. It's just kind of a hodgepodge of how you can get COVID. It's like been a very interesting thing. But basically, we would still treat it the same way. If you have a positive case, we quarantine for 14 days and we follow up on all your contacts. And then we also recommend them that we monitor them and do the same kind of work. So regardless of it's community spread or an outbreak, we were treated the same. It's all one pandemic.
Well, thank you. And I understand that the, the distribution of the PPE, that is it K-95, that those masks, that the, the business community has been very receptive and it was very, it was a successful distribution. And that gives me, and I also understand that Jennifer Purcell said that when Orla went out and checked businesses over this Fourth of July weekend, that the North Coast was complimented on, on how well that we are doing. Is that your understanding also?
Yeah, you know, I'd have to say that a lot of the, most of the businesses are complying. In fact, some of the earlier ones who didn't want to comply have now seen the light. So there are still a few stragglers out there who, you know, we still are working on. But most of all, we do see the majority of the businesses following up with wearing masks. And still a lot of folks, and I, maybe this is going to be the way they operate, they still haven't opened up their facility. They're still doing dying out and takeout food only. And, you know, some of them may stick with that model, which would be interesting. But I think that overall, we could be pretty proud in Clatsop County that our proprietors are doing the best they can in this difficult time.
I would agree. Thank you. Did any of the other Commissioners have a question for our Public Health Director? Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Mike, you sound like yourself, so I'm pretty sure that you feel better, which is wonderful news. I wonder if we have any way of tracking if there are people who are from other places, come here and then go back home and have, and show up COVID positive. Do we have a way of tracking that particular dimension?
Well, ironically that you asked that, we did have a case come in that they were traveled from Arizona on an RV and then they drove back today. We couldn't really prevent it from happening. So how it works on our end is that we got the ELR because it was presented in Clatsop County. So we're going to go ahead and turn that over to the county in Arizona that they will eventually end up in. And then they're going to have to do all the contact tracing. So how it would work in reverse, if someone came here and then went back and then they turned out to be sick, we would be notified from their county and our state health department about those contacts and then we would be following up with them.
That's so reassuring. Thank you very much.
Sure.
And I, I wanted to say one more thing about, I'm just so grateful that we have such a great staff and leadership during this time. And I just, I know that the other Commissioners, I'm, I'm reading your mind Commissioners, but I know that the other Commissioners want to extend their thanks and also to encourage folks to take time off. I know that this, this COVID thing is going to go on for a long time and we need to, we need to have you all do your best to preserve yourselves too. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Well, thank you.
Okay, and then any other questions for Mr. McNichol? Or Dr. McNichol, excuse me, Dr. McNichol?
That's all right. Either one works.
Okay, all right. So let's move on now to the proposed ODOT change in Highway 101, 104 and Perkins Road. And we've got about 15 minutes for this.
Hi, Commissioners. Teresa, if you could please move me to the share screen option or tell me what I need to do to share my screen?
Yes, I will. Sorry about that.
That's okay. So I'm hoping that you can all see what I have up on the slide right now. If you could shake your head. Okay, thank you. So I have with me Ted McLean, the Public Works Director, and his team to help share some of this information. But we just wanted to kind of bring you all up to speed on a proposed change that ODOT is looking to make at the Highway 101, Highway 104 Perkins Lane interchange. And to give some of you an idea of where this is at, we have some maps here. This is just a web map oversight to kind of give you a general idea. But to help orient you a little bit better, as you're approaching north into Warrington, this is the interchange just past Camp Reilia where there's the "Welcome to Warrington" sign that takes you off onto the Highway 104. And directly to the right or east is the Perkins Lane. So this slide here shows if you're headed northbound, coming upon that intersection on the right there, that right-hand turn lane is the turn lane onto Perkins. Then there's two, two lanes headed north and then there's a left turn lane turning off to 104. And this slide here is headed south. And so again, there is a right-hand turn lane going on to 104 and then there is a left-hand turn lane turning on to Perkins Lane there. And this is just looking east across Highway 101 over to Perkins Lane. And this is looking from Perkins Lane over to the west on 104. And then this is the area that is being proposed that traffic would be rerouted. So part of this plan is that you would no longer be able to make a left-hand turn off of Perkins Road to come out onto the highway. So you wouldn't be able to cross the traffic to head south from Perkins. And you wouldn't be able to cross the traffic to turn left off of 104 to head north on 101. And so if you wanted to take a left-hand turn off, or sorry, if you wanted to take a left-hand turn to go south and you were coming off of Perkins, you would need to go down to Dolphin, which is closer towards the Ensign Lane intersection where, down by Home Depot. So you would have to cross traffic down there. And then in addition, depending on what decision ODOT makes in regards to the type of median they would put in there, it, it could potentially also cause any northbound traffic to have to go up to the Ensign Light Interchange to, to make a left-hand turn or to turn down on the Highway 104 spur by Ocean Crest. So the reason that we're bringing this to your attention is not because we don't care about safety of those traveling on Highway 101, but we just have some concerns in regards to where, where the issue is going to be moved to. And so the reason why the state gives us even any say-so on this and not the city of Warrington is because it impacts, it directly impacts a county road, which is Perkins Lane. And so we also did reach out to the city of Warrington though because as a community partner, we imagine that they have some concerns for this as well because it does have potential impacts on them, even though it's not directly impacting a road connected to this. Some of the concerns that they have is that the design doesn't show existing water and sewer line. The lighting at the intersection for both north and south, south approaches would be warranted. This intersection is extremely dark at night and it's even worse when it's raining out. The plan should also include numerous signs warning driver access changes, rather than people getting to this point thinking that they'd be able to turn and then trying to make a U-turn around a median or something like that. They would want to make sure that the median is mountable for fire and life safety vehicles. And then they have concerns regarding the additional traffic use on Dolphin, especially given that there is going to be a new school campus constructed down there. Dolphin wasn't designed for heavy traffic and this would, the school is going to impact that and then this could potentially impact it as well. And then they also have concerns with additional traffic use on southeast Ensign Lane, which already has a lot of traffic issues related to the development on both sides of Highway 101 there, as well as existing traffic on the, or as well as Highway 101 spur, or 104 spur, and then the existing, if not on bridge, traffic. I'm going to let Ted speak to some of the concerns that the county also has in regards to potential impact for Perkins and the, the bridge that we have there that, that also wasn't designed for this type of traffic.
Monica, may I ask a question?
Sure.
I drove over there this weekend to look at all of this. And I know that anytime they're doing things with roads, it's several years out where they're making plans. And our community has changed a lot in the last few years. Do you think that this plan was made before all the changes that have been happening for us? For example, the, the new school, the plan for over in Warrington?
Yes. So, and Ted can speak to this more as well, but this goes back to a traffic study plan that Ted, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's at least 10 years old. And, and it, and it, they, they have a, a number of factors that they evaluate for traffic safety on. And this, several years ago, had an incident that rated it to be one of their safety concerns. We have, while it's outdated, in our 2012 strategic plan, there are other areas that in the last 10 years have had significantly more accidents, specifically there by Greenwood Village, that, that also rate, but the, the financial impact to make a change there is significantly, significantly greater than the change that is necessary here. So they do have funds and it's my understanding the reason that they're wanting a response from us sooner rather than later is because this project, if we give them the go-ahead that we're fine with this, is something that will happen in this coming fiscal year. So I'll let Ted speak some more on all of that, though.
Thank you.
Yes, the, the study that they did at this particular intersection, so the crash results and the, the way they have it designed is the only way that they can fund it through the arts grant, which is for traffic safety. So they can't get any money here to really do construction, but they can do it under traffic safety programs. And it might be good to have the area manager to talk to the board about this as to how they score these projects and why these other projects can't seem to make it through. But this particular project, I gave you a little paper there that shows the figure 2.7 is what they're proposing. And we would ask them if we could do the 2.8 so that we can continue to turn left on Perkins. And they said it wouldn't score if they did that. They can only do it the, the way that 2.7 is there with a left-hand turn only onto 104. So what that does for us, I mean, we can deal with, with this. And this project is scheduled for 2022. So our maintenance, we regularly go down these roads and we chip steel these smaller roads and we do that with larger equipment, trucks and chip spreaders and excavators to maintain the ditches. And we're kind of on a cycle time when we do this, about a five to seven year cycle we go in. So by closing off this intersection this way, it makes us use the Dolphin intersection. And the Dolphin intersection or the Dolphin Road has a bridge that's a single-lane bridge that we have load-rated. We've done repairs on the bridge so that heavy loads can go over it. But it is a wood bridge with wood timbers. And so before this happens, if you approve of their method here, we would need to repair that bridge. We could work around it, but it's best for us to do it now so that we don't impact so many people. so that we don't impact so many people on the south side of that bridge. And I think there's like 30, 30 or 35 homes in there that would be impacted by this intersection going in and us having to close the bridge for repairs. So that's, it is manageable for the residences and emergency services could still get in there. But just for ease of getting the bridge fixed and the ease on the residents there, it would be better to do it right away if this construction took place. So that's, that's about it for the road department as far as how it affects our maintenance on the roads. And we do, we will have to adjust how we stockpile our materials for chip sealing because we can't make that turn. We have to go down Dolphin to make the turn the other direction to get to our stockpile sites.
Looks like Commissioner Thompson has a question.
That's, that's one of the two ways I can get from where I am to Astoria. So it's very familiar to me. I know that ODOT has their particular methodology and their manuals and their funding priorities and I have great respect for them. But as you speak, I mean, I wonder if that intersection is so dangerous that it's safe. I've heard that term used, but I don't know. With the increasing volume, which has gone up exponentially and will only continue to press that into, to force it into Dolphin Lane. I mean, there are already have been crashes there because so much traffic is going through that intersection. Is it, is it reasonable to think that maybe a traffic signal could go in there? Do you know?
Well, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's it.
I've talked to them about that. I've talked to them about lowering the speed, just, just lowering the speed to 45 through there seems to me that would, could be a reasonable effort to start with. And, but they, they didn't see it that way. So pushing the traffic or the problem down to another spot just doesn't seem quite reasonable. They, two years ago, we were talking about the Sunset, Sunset Beach Road intersection and it's dangerous there as well. And they wanted to put in a, what they call a jug handle that goes down to Colby Lake and swings back around. And it was just pushing the, the same problem down to another spot. And along with that is, so we have our bridge that we need to make repairs to. And the 104 spur has the Skiponon River Bridge that has a load rating also. And so that kind of, when it has a load rating on it and you're sending more traffic over it, it creates the same issue that we're facing with the Dolphin Bridge.
Ted, does a, it sounds to me like you're trying to, trying to look at how, if this does occur, how can we best handle it? But does that mean, because if it's the bridge I'm thinking of, when you're talking about repairing it, would that mean changing it out? Or I mean, is it budgeted to repair it? And is ODOT willing or able to help us with some of the things that we'll need to do to mitigate, mitigate for this change?
ODOT doesn't have any money.
Yeah, ODOT is not planning to provide any additional assistance.
No.
So whatever we need to do for this bridge, it's going to come out of our budget.
It will come out of our budget. It won't be a full replacement. It would be a repair. And we don't expect, at this point, we don't expect heavy traffic going in that direction. And that's part of why we kept it load-rated because there is a concrete company, A1 Concrete, that is just down the road. We don't want them coming in that direction and just because of that bridge. But the heaviest rig right now that goes over it is probably the garbage truck and it can be substantially heavy. But that's, we're looking at improving the, the bridge to a two-lane bridge with the existing vents that we have and just keeping it load-rated so that it's just basically the biggest rig that could go over it is the school bus or the garbage truck.
So it sounds to me, if I may ask, it sounds like the county has concerns and the city of Warrenton has concerns. Have, if these two, have we gone to talk to ODOT with our concerns? I imagine you have. Are they, are they pretty set on, on having this happen or what?
So that's kind of why we're here. We have talked to ODOT and they have said, you know, if the county says that they don't want this to move forward, they won't move forward. However, the way that their projects get planned doesn't mean we then get to say, well, we don't want you to improve this part. We want you to improve this part instead. It doesn't work that way and the region is pretty large. And I believe they said that most likely the project that would get replaced, go in place instead of this, if this one didn't move forward is down in, I think Marion County, he said, Ted.
Yeah, yeah.
Ted, do you think it contributes to, do you think it resolves the, the safety concerns ODOT has?
No, I think it will help. But I think the problem will be at that intersection, it will help, but it'll push the problem down to other areas. And just slowing the speeds in there would, would really help. But the increased traffic and the way we go to a four-lane to a two-lane, back to a four, back to a two in a compressed area is, is dangerous all by itself.
Commissioner Nebiker has a question.
Oh, thank you. Commissioner Nebiker?
Thank you. So is it the staff's opinion that it would be better to ask them to slow the speed there rather than do this project?
That's what I'd like to see is maybe a little more communication with slowing the speeds and talking to the area manager and, and their engineers to see if that could help the situation. Go ahead.
Well, I, I trust you've studied it and you know what, what you think would be best. So I, I would go with that.
So, so we just wanted to bring you all up to speed and we can have kind of where we're at and if you want to provide us with some more feedback. And I do know that the city of Warrenton was also on this call. We are getting short on time though, and I know that there is another topic to discuss. And so if you do have more questions for staff, please don't hesitate to contact us and, and we can make sure that we keep you up to date on, on where we're at with communicating with the state and proposing perhaps again if a reduced speed is an option. Does that sound reasonable?
Absolutely. Thank you, Monica.
Commissioner Nebiker?
Yeah, I have another question. So is the city of Warrenton, are they okay with it except it, but for all, meeting all of those concerns, then, then they would say fine? Do we know?
I'm, I will let Colin typically, we don't let people speak, but Colin, if you want to go ahead and unmute yourself and speak on behalf of the city? If you're able to unmute yourself? I don't know that he's able to unmute himself, but we can follow up to confirm what they're, where they're at beyond their concerns that they emailed to us.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Monica. And thank you, Ted. Let's move on now to delinquent transient room tax accounts. And we have about 20 minutes left before six, but this is slated for about 10 minutes. So if we could get the staff report, that'd be great.
All right. Well, thank you for your time, commissioners. In the beginning of the stages of COVID, I'm glad you asked. Right, by the way, with the suspension. And in the beginning stages of COVID, we had a lot of requests from lodging providers to provide some sort of relief with transient rent tax. After reviewing our ordinance, we decided to go ahead and defer the recording of liens against any delinquent accounts. And now here we are, month later, and we have several accounts that are delinquent going back to October of 2019. So we are now coming to you guys for some direction on how to move forward with these delinquent accounts. And we've provided a few different options. And most, you know, one of them is just to continue doing what we're doing, continuing to hold off. The other is to revert back to our standard administrative processes, which is to report a lien starting July 31st on all accounts that are delinquent. And then the third would to be use the standard administrative process on those accounts that were not, that were delinquent prior to COVID-19. And then continue to defer on those that were actually impacted by COVID.
Okay, thank you. I guess one question I have is my understanding about room taxes is that they're supposed to set that aside. That's what the staff report also said, correct? So is there a reason that the businesses before COVID-19 did not get their payments in? Do you know?
Well, they didn't submit their payment. So, you know, you're absolutely right. The intention of transient rent tax is you collect it from the tourist and then you hold it in escrow until you remit it over to the county. For lack of a better term, some people rob Peter to pay Paul for whatever reason and don't submit the payment. So that typically results in penalties and interest and then eventually a lien. And but then with COVID, we decided to go ahead and hold off on the lien process until we could, they started renting again essentially.
Commissioner Nebiker has a question.
Oh, thank you.
Do we know the reason why these haven't been paid? Has there been communication with these lodging owners?
Not really. We send, we do send notices. So I know in the agenda, I provided the process. So they've all received several communications as far as, you know, you're delinquent. They've received three or four letters at this point with little response as far as why. I think I did get response from One Bed and Breakfast who had several quarters delinquent and just struggled for a while now.
Has there, have there been, are these ones that have done this before in the past? I know we've had other situations where there's been delinquency in this. Are these the same people or totally different? Or do you know?
We have some repeating offenders. Yeah, the ones that are going back to October 19, these are some of the accounts where it usually takes a letter or two threatening a lien to get them to pay.
Thank you, thank you.
Are, are any of the funds that are coming for businesses, if business can apply, do any of those go towards this type of debt?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear what you have said.
Well, some, some businesses are getting some funding to help during COVID because of COVID problems, but that doesn't seem like that would apply to taxes they owe.
No, like you had mentioned earlier, really this is taxes that should have been collected from their tenants instead in escrow. So really there should be money that they had to pay us. You know, we just, and they just didn't. They used it for other purposes or they still have it and just haven't remitted it. You know, I can't speak to why they haven't paid it, but we haven't received it.
Well, the problem, as we all know, is when we don't get the taxes, then we can't, we can't do the services that we need to do with this tax money. This is a really sticky wicket, isn't it? Is there, do you think, I'm sorry, go ahead, county manager.
Well, I was just gonna, just provide a little bit of background too. Is that when we, when, when your board approved the emergency order to close lodging, at that point, we didn't know how long that that was going to last. And it was a pretty devastating act for those hotels, bed and breakfasts, campgrounds. And so, so, you know, we wanted to be sensitive because we didn't know how long that this was, was going to last. But now that they are open and they are open at 100%, certainly that gives everybody the opportunity to then generate revenue. And when you start generating revenue, one of your sensitivities should be what you owe off of previous commitments and previous leases. And so, so I think what the real factor is, is that, you know, we're still in a COVID situation and certainly we're still sensitive that a lot of businesses are struggling. But for those businesses that, that didn't pay prior to COVID and didn't pay prior to the emergency order, it would minimally, minimally seem appropriate to at least address those that are in the rears from that, that time period and then still apply some flexibility going forward. But there would be a limit to that, knowing that things have kind of returned back to some semblance of normal for the hotels.
That makes sense to me too.
I agree with that approach.
Yeah. Did any other commissioners have any other comments? Okay, Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, I think at the staff recommendation for option three, sounds very good to me. I, I, I think that's an excellent way to deal with this. And maybe, you know, judging since, since we don't know very much about the future, that, that handling the, the next quarters as they come, we can maybe make other decisions. But I think that option three is, is definitely the way, the way that, that we, would be the best way to proceed.
Commissioner Nebiker?
I think it's a compromise and a, and a show of compassion. And I agree.
And that, that's in line, that's in line with what the county manager was explaining to us, is it not? Yeah.
Yes, Chair Silverman, that is consistent.
Okay. So Commissioner Thompson, do you have any comments?
No, it's a tough situation. This is, I think people were planning on being able to float with it. The flow didn't work. That's the risk. And it's, it's unfortunate, but there have to be real consequences because the money is supposed to be in escrow. It's supposed to be held sacrosanct, not used for operating expenses or anything else. So the rules were clear at the beginning and I expect some people to be unhappy with us. But I see option three is the best option.
And if I could just say, for the benefit of all, of the Commissioner's staff would, would be supportive of us just collecting as is typical because this, what the agreement is, is that this is a set aside. It is collected at the point that, that there is occupancy. And so I think that staff would certainly support that. The only wild card that none of us predicted was the pandemic wild card. And so, and so I think, given where we are and where we, we are going short of another emergency order, I think we will be able to transition to more of a typical procedure in a, in a relatively short timeframe. But this will give it time to kind of normalize before we do that.
Okay, I, I, I would agree with that, too. And I, so it looks like we have a consensus on that, on that matter. So I think that insists for our work session. Looks like it does. So why don't we, did you, did the staff do anything more on that topic? Is that okay with what we, what we discussed?
That's.
That's okay. All right, so why don't we just shut our cameras off for a few minutes before the six o'clock meeting? And we'll all join each other at, at six o'clock. Thank you.
Everybody could please mute their microphones also.
Yes, mute, yes, mute the microphone.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chair Sullivan?
Okay, yes.
I have, I have a question, a point of order. On the consent agenda. Page 99. The motion doesn't approve the amount of the, of the budget amount? I'm getting echoes. Okay. So page 99. If that motion included the budget amount of 108,480, so I don't know if that means that should be pulled from the consent agenda or, or what? Otherwise.
When, when you, when you make the motion, you could just add in the 108,480 in the motion.
Consent calendar, though.
It's on the consent calendar.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Do we need that amount on, in the motion, Monica?
Joanna, I would defer to you. I, I don't think so because it's an actual budgeted contract. It's just approving the contract.
It makes the record clearer.
I agree with you, Monica, because it's already been appropriated as part of the budget process. It's already in the budget. So approving the contract should be sufficient.
Going forward, I would appreciate if the amount were included in it, even if it, just because it creates a better public record, I think. And I, I just think the public deserves that. So, thank you.
Yeah.
I would agree with Commissioner Thompson.
Commissioner Thompson, we will do that.
Thank you, sir.
Good catch, Commissioner Thompson.
Somewhat obsessed personality.
That's all right. So, okay, we are, it is now 6:02, and we are here for the regular session of the Clatso County Board of Commissioners. I would like to welcome, first, I'd like to ask if there's any member of the public might, I got this right? Yeah. Is there any members of the public who have logged in to testify? To please mute your own or computer until they are called on.
Commissioner Sullivan, we need to open the meeting with roll call and.
Right, I, I, the way my, I'm just reading down through the script, and it starts with them asking to please mute the, their, their phones before they go forward.
Okay, I see.
So, but I agree, yeah, usually we do it the other way around, you're right. The Board of Commissioners, as the governing body of Clatso County, all county service districts for which this body so acts, and as the Clatso County Local Contract Review Board, is now meeting in regular session. And this is July 8th, 2020. So Clerk of the Board, may we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Nebiker?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Quila?
He's, I see him, I, I don't.
Commissioner Webb?
Here.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Here.
Okay.
I think Commissioner Quila is frozen.
Everything's, everything's breaking.
Are you losing contact, Commissioner Quila? What I did before is.
Yeah, I can't hear anything.
Okay. The last meeting, and I, I muted my computer and got on the phone, or shut my computer way down, got on the phone, about. Can you hear us now, Commissioner Quila?
I was here just fine until you started doing roll call, so I don't know what happened. But, yeah, I can, I can hear.
Okay.
I'm here.
All right, thank you. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
Commissioner Thompson moves to approve the agenda.
Do I have a sec? Is that Commissioner Nebiker?
Yes.
Okay, so the move, the motion, the agenda has been, the motion has been given and seconded. Any objections to approving that agenda? We're hearing no objections. We will, the agenda has been approved. And let's go to the next thing, which is the proclamation. We have the staff. Staff report on that.
I believe Kristen is on the line.
Is she able to unmute her phone?
I, I'm only showing two callers on the line, and they're both unmuted. Paul, can, do you know if Kristen was going to join us? She had told me that she was.
Well, I can go ahead and just provide just a quick overview. And thus Paul's going to be on, but.
I just figured out how to unmute myself, so Kristen might be battling the same thing. If you want to pause for a second, I will go run and check and see if she's there and figure out how to unmute if she is.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I realize what's missing for me is the Pledge of Allegiance. And it's, I hadn't thought about that, but we've always started every meeting with it until this. On the other hand, I've never done a.
It looks like Kristen is trying to fall in now.
Fall in now.
I, I think that we might be having some technical difficulties. Kristen, Kristen and Paul, would you be okay with the County Manager giving this information? Or are you able to give that to us now?
I'm fine with it.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Mrs. Paul, yes, I'm fine with that, considering the challenges we're having right now.
Well, I will be really brief on board, and it's not because I don't want to give this proclamation all of its due, but given the technical difficulties, and I don't know if Teresa or I will actually read the proclamation, but this proclamation is for the week of July 19th through the 25th, 2020. And it's to really recognize the performance of our probation, parole, and, and community supervision professionals. This is a day that is in their honor, or a week that's in their honor nationwide. These are vital staff that are part of our, part of our public safety system. They play an integral role as, as we have folks that are transitioning in their life. And so we do want to recognize them and thank them for all of their professionalism and sacrifice that they make in, in serving the public. So, and we will go ahead and read the proclamation, if that is okay, Chair Sullivan.
Yeah, and I'm happy to read it also. It, it does require a motion beforehand. So the motion would be that, that the Board proclaimed July 19th to 25th, through the 25th, 2020, as pre-trial probation and parole supervision week. Would anyone like to make that motion? Commissioner Nebiker?
Commissioner Thompson seconds.
Okay.
I'll make the, I'll make the motion. I move that the Board proclaim July 19th to the 25th, 2020, as pre-trial probation and parole supervision week.
Okay, Commissioner Thompson seconded that? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, any comments from the Commissioners?
Such important, such important work, really grateful.
Absolutely. Commissioner Nebiker?
Yes, I would just like to say, I know through the, the time that we have started that pre-trial program that the justice system, system has done that, we have seen really dramatic. we have seen really dramatic improvement in people showing up and it's just been, it's been a big success. And I, I think that everyone is to be commended for their work in making this happen. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Nebiker. So if it's all right with you, I'll read the proclamation. The proclamation, whereas community corrections is an essential part of the justice system, and whereas community corrections professionals uphold the law with dignity while recognizing the right of the public to be safeguarded from criminal activity, and whereas community corrections professionals are responsible for supervising adult and juvenile offenders in the community, and whereas community correction professionals are trained professionals, provide services and referrals for offenders, and whereas community corrections professionals work in partnership with community agencies and groups, and whereas community correction professionals promote, promote prevention, intervention and advocacy, and whereas community corrections professionals provide services, support and protection for victims, and whereas community correction professionals advocate community and restorative justice, and whereas community correction professionals are a true force for positive change in their communities. And now therefore, be it resolved that we, Board of Commissioners of Clatsop County, do hereby proclaim July 19th through the 25th, 2020 as pre-trial probation and parole supervision week, and encourage all citizens to honor their community correction professionals and to recognize their achievements. So, thank you. And thank you, Paul Williams and Kristen for being, being on the call today. I'm sorry you weren't able to, to speak because of technical difficulties. Okay, let's move on to the next item. Which is business for the public. This is an opportunity for anyone to give a two-minute presentation about any item on the agenda, except public hearings, or any topic of county concern that is not on the agenda. Clerk of the Board, are there any written comments that were sent in from the public?
Yes, I have two written comments.
Okay. Would you like to read those now?
Sure. The first one's from Robert Holland. I am writing you as a resident of the county where we live adjacent to the Main Line Road at the intersection of Main Line and Patterson Lane. It has come to the attention of local residents that the county has quietly planned purchase of the old sorting yard off Fort Clatsup Road as well as the Main Line Road. The exact plans, including clear description of use, traffic flow changes, impact, environmental impact, and input from the local residents has not been forthcoming. Prior to any county commitment, it is essential to more openly discuss these issues in a public forum, especially to include input from the local residents living adjacent to the area in question who will be most affected. I strongly urge not rushing into any decision prior to this exchange of information. We would strongly support moving county shops into the area of the old sorting yards at the junction of Main Line and Fort Clatsup Road. The size of the site is generous, access is adequate, and it sits out of the danger from tsunami damage. On the other hand, expansion improvement of Main Line Road though would serve no unmet need. Adequate county roads between rural Astoria and Seaside already exist within a few hundred yards of the Main Line, and the addition of a new throughput would be redundant and totally unnecessary. For Main Line to be available as a tsunami evacuation route would require only removal of the several gates blocking the roadway. Traffic in an evacuation would be one-way and not require development of a second opposite direction lane. Besides being of no value to the county, expanding and widening the Main Line would serve as a detriment to the local area and the residents by increasing high-speed traffic, increasing noise, increased pollution, significant safety concerns, reduce local security, and would require removal of trees and foliage which provide shade, wildlife refuge, and the beauty that makes rural Oregon a desirable place to live. Again, I encourage patience and more transparent decision-making. A public meeting with those most affected by this purchase and a complete explanation from the county prior to any purchase should be called in the immediate future. Thank you, Robert Holland and Camille Holland. 3494, 34951 Patterson Lane, Astoria. And this one is from Dawn Peepo and Terri Beal. Good afternoon, Clatsop County Commissioners, County Manager and Public Works. This email is for public comment. My name is Dawn Peepo. I am voicing my concern on behalf of myself, my mother, Terri Beal, owner, and our family. Our address is 34893 Patterson Lane, Astoria, Oregon. The reason for this email is to express our concern regarding the land sale trade at the Crown Cellar Block Main Line Sorting Yard and other pieces of property near to the Main Line between James Ace Nikas, the Campbell Group, and others to Clatsup County. First and foremost, we want to know what the plan is for the county acquiring this property. What is going to be done with it? Is the county planning to open the current Main Line as a public road for anyone to drive down from Lucas Lane at Fort Clatsup Road and the old sorting yard through to the end of Lewis and Clark where it meets at the current Crown Camp? Is the county planning to expand the Main Line to a two-lane road? If so, how will the county do this? Will you be taking property from current landowners on each side of the Main Line? How will the county keep to the RA5 zoning if you are taking from these properties? This will affect the value of these properties as well. How will the bridge culvert that goes over the current Main Line be retrofitted? As it sits, there's not enough room for two vehicles. Is the county just acquiring this property to use the two ends, such as the old sorting yard and/or the Crown Camp area for the new county shop so as to remove them from the tsunami zone? Is the county just acquiring the property to have it and maintain it, making zero changes to the Main Line itself? Will the county begin maintaining other roads as people will turn down the gravel roads lost to turn around and cause additional wear and tear that the residents have to pay to repair? Example, gravel replacement. What is the timeline that this project is moving forward? These roads were locked with gates for a reason. Taking them down and turning this into a thoroughfare through our backyards defeats that entire purpose. Regardless of speed limit, there will be irresponsible people who will use that road with excessive speed, causing accidents, damage to property, injuries, or even worse. In addition, the amount of trespassing we have seen increase in the past few months has also become an issue and will continue to be an issue with an open road. The residents need answers and clear communication of what is happening literally in our own backyards. We are deeply concerned and frustrated that this has become a real possibility in our neighborhood. The residents up and down the Main Line use this for walking, biking, hiking, riding horses, walking animals, et cetera. There is strong opposition from the neighborhood regarding this matter, and we very much hope that you take this into consideration. We are asking you to reconsider. If the Commissioners or City Manager or Public Works would hold a meeting with the residents to go over the plan, that would be appreciated. Thank you for your time, Dawn Peepo and Terri Beal. That's all the public comment.
Clerk of the Board, thank you. Are there any members of the public who have registered to speak?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate everybody who sent in comments. Thank you. So, let's move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Thompson moves to adopt the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So is any, anyone opposing, do we have to do a roll call on that?
No roll call, just consensus, please.
Okay, any, any objections to approving the consent calendar? Hearing no objections, the consent calendar has been approved. We will now move on to the Commissioners' liaison reports. Commissioner Webb, I'd like to start with you tonight. If you're, if you're ready, Commissioner Webb.
Yes, I'm sorry, I misplaced my thing. Let's see, I, I think I, at our work session, I talked about the NOHA Board. And, oh, I think I was at the end of the NOW, the Work Northwest Oregon Works Program, talking about the fact that the Astoria Work Source Office was one of the few in the area that, that had remained open. And I think we all know that there's been huge delays, et cetera, about the unemployment compensation applications which were received and, and I've heard from way too many people about what an agonizing experience that was. But there's kind of a good news, bad news issue. We have, in the last few years, because this region, and this region incidentally is a five-county area that extends from Columbia down to Lincoln County, actually over also to Benton County. The, the bad news is that because our unemployment rate has been so low, in the past few years, we have received a declining amount of resources for all of the programs that are, that are administered by, by this, by this legislation which interprets in, into a, a regional agency. But the, the good news is that now that our unemployment rate is, has gone up tenfold in the past, in the past few months, that the folks at the state are expecting that legislation from the feds, which, which basically provides the, the resources for all of this money that goes through the state down to the local level, that they will pretty much automatically increase. And not just pursuant to the CARES Act, but probably afterwards because our unemployment rate will be nowhere near the level that it was at, at the beginning of, of this year. And that would be nice because a lot of the programs that they administer have been almost placed on hold. Actually, I would love for this group to come, maybe, County Manager, we could schedule some kind of a report for the session at a, for the Board at a work session because there are a lot of programs going on in, in, among these counties and specifically in Clatsop County that are funded by these dollars that I think are going to be very important to our recovery. The last thing I have to mention is that this afternoon, Congresswoman Suzanne Bonamici had a webinar on something that has been produced by a, by a congressional committee. It's a, it's a House Committee on Climate Change. And they have produced a report that is, that they're calling the Climate Action Plan. And it's very extensive and quite action-oriented. I think it's a wonderful description of, of, of the kinds of climate initiatives that need to be taken now. And the report is out. And I'd love maybe at a future date to have it be made available to the Commission because it has, it has a lot of, of very proactive actions that are very specific to the coast. And, and it was, it was a marvelous webinar. It was, as always with, with Representative Bonamici, it was robust and very informative. So I'll try to make sure everybody gets a copy of the Climate Action Plan. I think that's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Webb, I'm wondering if that will be available on YouTube?
What, I think the, it is, it is, the report itself is available right now on Representative Bonamici's website. Excuse me, on her, at her email address. And she also has a YouTube channel, and so if, I'm assuming that the webinar will be repeated there. But it's, it's the Climate Action Plan report itself that I think is worth, is definitely worth reading for, for, for the, all the Commissioners.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Webb. Which Commissioner would like to go next? Ready? Commissioner Quila, how are you doing with your sound? Can you go next?
I don't know, you tell me. Can you hear me? Okay. I just, I, I really appreciated seeing the op-ed in the Daily Astorian online. I hope that they can put it on Facebook as well. I know they haven't posted it yet, but it really summarizes all that our public health staff has been doing. I really appreciate County Manager and Dr. McNichol working so hard over that, on that over the weekend. And I'm glad that we could act united in support of it. It's just been a very challenging four months and I just am very, very proud of all that our Health Department has accomplished over those four months. That's all.
Thank you. I, very well said. I agree. Commissioner Thompson, would you like to go next?
Sure, agree with what Dr. McNichol said about the hard work of the staff and the County Manager. Nice to be able to highlight it. I registered for that seminar from Congresswoman Bonamici and I got involved in other calls and missed it, so I'm glad Commissioner Webb saw that. Working on tide gates, Dr. Suter from Oregon State has a presentation for us. So the County Manager has said he'll get us some, an opportunity at a work session to talk about tide gates and flood control. Mark Labhard, a former Tillamook County Commissioner is working on that issue and he gave his hearty endorsement to that. So that's a wonderful thing that we have to look forward to. Working on broadband at, at the poll cast meeting tomorrow, the, the formation of the broadband action team for Columbia, Clatsup and Tillamook Counties will take place, we think, echoing what's already happened down south in Lincoln County and some other counties to the east that's been very effective. So what we're hoping to do is to get the coast covered with broadband. We think that'd be swell. Northwest ACT meets and deals with transportation issues, ODOT, so I'll bring up the issue of Perkins Lane. I'll tell you though, ODOT has its own methodology and so they, they like to do things the way they like to do things. That's very clear. They have manuals and procedures and they're engineers. So with greatest possible respect for them, the feeling that I got from my colleagues was.
I'm not hearing you.
I'm just, I'm just sitting here. I don't know.
I hear you now.
Okay, let me not touch my computer. I'll put my hands in this render position. Okay. So ODOT has their methodologies, but I didn't hear that we thought it was a good solution for Clatsop County and I'm happy to convey that information. The Oregon Housing Stability Council will meet on Friday. And I had a conversation with Commissioner Jaipole from Multnomah County who reminded me that there are 150,000 poor people that she's directly concerned with. And that, that puts our problem in perspective. On the other hand, we need to balance that with what we need here. So that, bridging that urban-rural divide in all of the dimensions that matter is important. There also is, finally, I think AOC will be going forward with some other activities in formal conversations, but Liz Dent mentioned that the Department of Forestry is having an open public meeting this Monday. I think it's 1:00 to 4:30. And so that's available to the public. I've sent it to some folks, but if others want to participate, this Habitat Conservation Plan, which is designed to give predictability to both conservation and insofar as possible revenues. and, insofar as possible, revenue streams for county services, I think the more of us get informed and participate in that conversation, the better. And that's my report, Madam Chair, except, one more thing, to appreciate the fact that we're moving forward to do strategic planning. That's really wonderful. I'm delighted about that. Thanks to County Manager and staff and my colleagues for working on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Neveker?
Yes, I have a few things. So I attended the CREST budget meeting. And they have six projects planned for this year. I won't go into those, but I want to follow up with Commissioner Webb. I believe, you asked about Big Creek. Is that right?
Yes, that was correct. And thank you for your response. I did get it. I'm sorry. I haven't acknowledged it yet.
Oh, you did get it. Okay. So I don't, I don't need, well, I'll just say it, because maybe somebody else is interested. But so Jane Harris, the Executive Director of the North Coast Watershed Association informed CREST that they're getting started on a geomorphic study of Big Creek. That's near Highway 30. And they're working with six to seven landowners, and the county and ODOT. And they've received funds for the study from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And that will allow them to develop a long-term restoration plan for this area. Okay, so that's that. I attended the Health and Human Services Advisory Council. There's a proposed addition to the bylaws to allow the council to respond when necessary in case of emergency. And I believe this will come to the commission. I think that when there is a change to the bylaws, that comes before the commission. CBH, maybe you all know this, they now own the Respite Center.
Wow.
This is really good. The Bond Street renovation is soon to be completed. CBH is operated 60% to 70% now with telehealth. Amy Baker said there's no roadmap to providing mental health services during a pandemic. She's working on getting more social media messages out. The Mental Health Clubhouse, and I don't remember what it's called, if it even has a name yet, but it's based on a national model. They're looking at a soft opening. The clubhouse was a recipient of one of the grants from the Health and Human Services Advisory Council. And this will help these folks meet together in community to talk about their common issues and find support, so that they are less disconnected. And Health and Human Services Council wants to visit the Coda Clinic in Seaside sometime in the future. That's the clinic on the highway on 101 that helps people with addictions. I wanted to, this isn't really related to the county commission, but I can't help myself, I want to say these couple of things, because these people do live in Clatsop County. One is my son, who's going to be live streaming music for three different charities. This will go worldwide. The first one is for the Equal Justice Initiative. So this is to raise money for them. This is...
Commissioner Neveker, do you want to give the name of your son's band?
Oh, Blind Pilot. But this is just him and his new original music, because they can't get together because of COVID. So this is, he's going to be contributing. All proceeds will go to the Equal Justice Initiative. And that's for, well, you know, to better understand, educate, and help inform better outcomes for racism and inequality. And then he's going to do another one the following week, which will be for the Navajo Water Project, because 30% of those folks don't have water. They don't have running water. And you may know that actually, in our own state, the Warm Springs Reservation is, you know, suffering from lack of water. And then the last one will be for the Martha P. Johnson Institute. And they assist the LGBTQ community. So he'll be raising funds for them as well. And then lastly, I don't know if anyone on this virtual meeting is a basketball fan, but my grandson, who worked for the Trail Blazers until they shut down, has been chosen out of everyone in the nation to go to the NBA playoffs in Orlando. And he will be running the software for those, all those games. And so they'll all be in a bubble. They'll be tested every few days. But he's so excited, and I'm very excited for him. So if anybody is a basketball fan and they watch any of these games, know that there's somebody from Clatsop County there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Neveker. Okay, for mine, I attended the Northwest Senior Disability Services meeting. And we continue to look for, we need a couple more volunteers on the advisory committee from Clatsop County. But they are holding their own with this COVID in the facilities that they do. The Forest Trust Land Advisory Committee, which was supposed to meet on Friday, has been canceled due to COVID. My concern with that is the same concern I had with the previous meeting that was canceled, is that these meetings get canceled, but they don't, they don't, they don't seem, at least they haven't asked me. I don't know if they're asking other members of the FTLAC meeting, but they certainly haven't asked Clatsop County. And I consider, I continue to be concerned about the process involved with that. But that's the way it is. And I agree with Commissioner Thompson. I believe I sent that out a few weeks ago about the Habitat Conservation Plan that's going to be, like she said, on Monday, the 13th. It's from 1:00 to 4:00. And it's going to be a Zoom meeting. I have attended most of those the last couple of years. And I will be in attendance for the one on Monday also. There's also going to be, Senator Merkley is going to have a Clatsop Town Hall meeting on Tuesday, July 14. It's starting at 5:00, and that will be online also. And then I have one more report, which is each year that, and Commissioner Quayle knows this already, I imagine, but each year, 4-H holds a National 4-H Congress. And this would have been the 100th year celebration. This year is scheduled to be held in Atlanta, Georgia. But due to COVID-19 and travel restrictions, the celebration may be delayed until next year. It's normally held over the Thanksgiving break, and they'll decide in September. Anyone who was chosen this year will be allowed to attend next year with next year's participants. Last year, Bailey McSwain represented Clatsop County at the National Congress. Individuals are invited to be interviewed by various 4-H officials from across the state. And it's an honor just to be chosen to be interviewed. This year, Tully Dare and Lacey Arwood were chosen to be interviewed. Those students chosen will have their trip paid for by private contributions and fundraising. And they'll get a small amount of spending money. Being at the Congress is an opportunity to do networking, leadership building, community service, as well as team building. And there are 13 students were selected from across the state this year. And they were interviewed by, you know, 4-H officials, interview them, and then choose who is going to go represent Oregon in the National Congress. This year, there were two chosen from Josephine County, three from Yamhill, two from Washington, three from Clackamas, one from Union, one from Dischutes, one from Clatsop County. And I'm very proud to say that Tully Dare, who is my nephew, was chosen from Clatsop County. I'm very proud of him, and congratulations to Tully. I also want to thank Sandra Carlson and all the leaders and volunteers that make the 4-H program possible in our county. It has been a very important part of my nephew's life. And it was an important part of my life growing up. And perhaps in the future, I hope to have time to be a 4-H leader again. I taught sewing, and that's how I learned to sew, was through 4-H. I know the fair will be different this year because of COVID. But 4-H will get through this, and perhaps Commissioner Quayle has more details as it goes on. I know the livestock auction will still happen, but be held in a different way. And I have no doubt that it'll be supported by the communities in Clatsop County. So Commissioner Quayle, do you have anything you wanted to add about the 4-H? Or will we wait for more information later? It looks like he's having trouble talking again. So if it's okay with you, Commissioner Quayle, we will hear back from you at another time. Is that okay? I think he's frozen. Okay, that looks like a nod. Let's go to the, thank you very much, everyone. And let's go to the County Manager's Report.
Chair Sullivan, members of the board. You have probably had an outreach, and you may have already met with county staff. But we are working on the website. And so we're meeting with all the departments and others, and making a list of improvements, and also looking at the actual organization and the backbone of the website. So you'll be seeing changes to that soon, which I think will be positive. Couple of things on the Public Works front. As you probably know, this week, Tucker Creek paving project started. And that will be ongoing until the end of July. And then the John Day Bridge project has also started, and that will be going until mid-September. I did want to touch base really quick on the mainline project. Staff is working right now, and it's staff from Public Works, County Manager's Office, and Community Development that is working on a community engagement plan. And so that will be forthcoming, and we'll be bringing that to your board. What I will say is that, you know, we are six months roughly out from having any decision by the board about whether the mainline will be pursued because of the community engagement process and just the diligence process. And so we will engage actively with the community between now and then. And it'll be a very transparent process. So we look forward to engaging that. It's been a little awkward for all of us not to be able to say more as we go through this. But it's because the process, the decision part of the process and the engagement part has not started yet. So, but the actual decision-making part is six months down the road, roughly. So, and again, staff is working hard with COVID. As Dr. Mike mentioned, we're probably going to see increased cases in the community. And I'm gratified to see that a lot of people are wearing masks. I'm certainly one of them that is adjusting to that and trying to be a good example for others. So we appreciate your board's support. And I do want to commend you for the op-ed piece that was in the Astorian. And just generally, thank you for your support.
Thank you, County Manager. Let's move on to public hearings. This is a time set for public hearing on a transfer of mineral rights to the surface owners of the property. May we have a staff report? 154 of your agenda.
Good evening, Chair Sullivan and members of the board. Good to see you, even though it's through this type of communication. I am here this evening to ask you to hold a public hearing. And it's a unique public hearing. The Oregon revised statute just says that you need to take comment on this transfer. Clatsop County retained certain mineral rights on several parcels of land that it did to the Board of Forestry, State of Oregon, in 1944. And they specifically reserved onto Clatsop County the mineral rights for all gold, silver, iron, copper, lead, coal, petroleum, gas, oil, or any other metal minerals or mineral deposits with mineral rights, with the usual rights and privileges of mining the same. So very specific language. Earlier this year, staff received a request from EcoTrust Forest Management, Inc. to relinquish the county's reserve mineral rights to the surface property owners, which currently are Onion Peak LLC and EcoTrust Forest, II LLC. And this request is only on certain parcels of the land east of Arch Cape, containing approximately 480 acres where the mineral rights are reserved from the county. This is part of a greater proposed 3,500-acre rainforest reserve project by the North Coast Land Conservancy. And you may have read about their fundraising in June in the Astorian. The North Coast Land Conservancy is securing funds for this purchase. And they hope that they will have it ended by sometime in 2021 and have it in their name. And in order for this transaction to go through and to be a clean and clear title, they are requesting for these mineral rights to be relinquished. So I contacted the only geologist that I know locally, Mr. Tom Horning. And he is a qualified geologist, to obtain a report on the probable value of the reserved mineral rights. Mr. Horning stated that he's a member of North Coast Land Conservancy and thus felt there could be a potential conflict of interest. However, he did share with me that another qualified geologist named Mr. Neem had done a report for North Coast Land Conservancy in 2017 and asked if we could use that report. So I then contacted our former county council, Heather Reynolds, to see if that report would suffice. And she concluded that it could be used. Since there was really no other qualified geologist that could provide this report, and North Coast Land Conservancy would have to pay for it, as that is what the statute requires. And they had already paid for this one report, which is quite extensive. I will share it with you. It is, I don't know, it's more than a half an inch thick. And it is very precise with a lot of information dating way back. So in that report, there is an assessment of the natural gas, oil, and coal and rock and aggregate resources and their potential. And this report was done by Dr. Neem. He is a registered professional geologist licensed in Oregon. Additionally, he's also president of the Pacific Northwest Geology LLC and Professor Emeritus of Geology, Oregon State University. And his reports are so conclusive that they have become to be known as, when they ask him to do a report on aggregates and rocks, they call it naming the rock, from his last name. His report does conclude that there is no probable value of mineral rights. There are eight small rock quarries located on various tax lots within this 3,500 acres, but no quarries on the proportions where the county retained the mineral rights. No coal beds have been reported. And there is extremely low or no resource potential for oil and very low potential for commercial accumulations of natural gas in the subsurface below these properties. There are no known metallic resources such as copper, gold, iron, or aluminum ores, or non-metallic ones such as clay deposits as smectide for lightweight aggregate building blocks. From this staff, from this report, staff has concluded that there is little or doubtful value on the mineral rights and that it would be in the best interest of the county to convey such rights to the record owners of the surface rights. And I came to you at a board meeting on May 27 to set today, July 8, to take comment on this request. And this required a notice in the Astorian once a week for four weeks, and that has been done. And this request is consistent with the county's Property Management Policy 1 and Oregon Revised Statutes 275312 to 316. And the surface right owners have made a deposit to cover the county cost. If there is an overage, we will refund them the balance. If it goes more than what they deposit, they will pay for that. So at this time... So at this time, staff is asking for the board to take comment as a public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Does any of the commissioners have questions for the staff? Okay, hearing none. I will open the public hearing. Clerk of the Board, has anyone registered to testify?
No, no testimony.
Okay, I will now close the public hearing and I will entertain a motion. The motion that I have shows, the motion to approve the transfer of mineral rights by adopting a resolution order and authorize the chair to sign the quick claim deeds. Would anyone like to make that motion?
Madam Chair, to make that or second if Commissioner Nebiker wants to make it.
Okay, I saw her hand up first, so.
Okay, I would ask the board to approve the transfer of the mineral rights by adopting the resolution in order and authorize the chair to sign the quick claim deeds.
And Commissioner Thompson, you second that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any discussion? Commissioner Nebiker?
I would just like to say, I had the privilege, this isn't really, well, this is tangential. I had the privilege of being taken on a tour of Onion Peak several years ago and what a magnificent place that is. And I'm very glad that it's going to be preserved. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, Clerk of the Board, may we have a roll call to vote on this motion, please?
Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Quila? Commissioner Webb?
Aye.
Commissioner Nebiker?
Aye.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
So it's my understanding that the vote was five to zero to approve the motion to approve the transfer of mineral rights by adopting a resolution in order and authorize the chair to sign the quick claim deed. Okay, that motion passes. Let's now move on to the business agenda. And the first one on the list for the business agenda, this cost of living adjustment for unrepresented employees, and this is on page 169 of your agenda. May we have the staff report, please?
Kelly, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Okay. I tried this about three different ways and it's successful 25% of the time. So in front of you is what we present typically every July regarding the annual cost of living adjustment. This looks slightly different from last year's. As you can see from the attachment, we were on track with the CPI to be kind of in line with where we were last year of 2.9. But then, as you know, COVID happened and the last three months, March, April, and May, kind of tanked. So tonight I'm presenting to you a proposal to keep non-represented employees in line with the five bargaining unit contracts of maintaining a two point, of approving a 2.5% COLA increase for the FY 2021 year. You can see from the fiscal impact section, regardless if you choose to approve a 0.8%, which is the CPI, or the proposed 2.5%, this will be less than the budgeted amount that the Budget Committee passed back in June. So I'll just leave it open to questions.
Okay, any commissioners? Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Director Stiles, what I see is that there's a difference of really less than $100,000 if we maintain parity between the unrepresented and the represented employees. Am I reading that right? The, yeah, the 2.5 COLA would be at $135,744. Sorry, $135,744. If we kept them to the actual CPI of 0.8, it would be $43,438. My personal opinion is that it would cost us more than $100,000 in employee morale and productivity and possible turnover if we fail to pay this really pretty nominal amount of $100,000 considering the rest of our budget. If we did, if we did do that two and a half percent COLA in some small way, that would be saying to them, we appreciate the extra work that you have done in this time of COVID. People can say, well, they're paid to work and they should work, but you know what? This has really been an extraordinary load on people. I personally am in favor of recognizing that by maintaining parity of two and a half percent COLA for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Anyone else?
I second everything that Commissioner just said.
So he agrees, Mr. Quila? Are you able to unmute?
Madam Chair, I did hear what he said.
It looks like he's unmuted now.
Can you hear?
Yeah, I can hear you. No.
Yeah, I agree with what Commissioner Thompson said. Sorry.
But thank you. Commissioner Webb, do you have any comments?
No, I fully support the staff recommendation.
Okay, Commissioner Nebiker?
I do as well.
As do I. Who would like to make the motion? Commissioner Thompson, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, I recommend that the Board of Commissioners adopt the resolution extending the emergency, no, no, wrong one, sorry.
Approve the attached resolution.
I move that the board approve the attached resolution in order implementing a cost of living adjustment of 2.5% for Clatsop County unrepresented confidential casual and contracted employees effective July 1st, 2020. Sorry, grabbed the wrong pile.
So thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Nebiker, you wanted to second that?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, so Clerk of the Board, it looks like Commissioner Quila is trying to find a better spot for his computer, but if he's able to hear us, I can't tell if he is or not. Clerk of the Board, can you call the roll for this motion?
Commissioner Webb?
Aye.
Commissioner Quila?
Aye.
Hey.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Nebiker?
Aye.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Okay, so the resolution to approve the resolution, to approve the attached resolution in order implementing a cost of living adjustment of 2.5% for Clatsop County unrepresented confidential casual and contracted employees effective July 1st, 2020 has passed unanimously. Thank you, and I will echo Commissioner Thompson and I know the belief of the rest of the commissioners that we want to thank all of these folks for all their hard work during this very difficult time and thank you so much. So let's go on to extend emergency declaration related to COVID-19. This is on page 171 of our packet. May we have the staff report, please?
Chair Sullivan, members of the board, as you're aware, the county has been extending a declaration of emergency with the governor. And so as the governor has been extending the statewide declaration, Clatsop County through your board has been extending the local declaration. The governor just extended hers to September 4th, 2020. My suspicion is that there'll be further extensions to that given what we're experiencing. And so what staff is recommending is that we just designate the county's declaration to the governor's date so that if the governor's date for declaration is extended beyond September 4th, ours would just mirror whatever the governor's is. The biggest reason that the local governments have these declarations is so that we can be eligible for reimbursements, for expenditures related to our COVID-19 response, as well as it gives your board the flexibility to make other decisions such as emergency orders if the situation on the ground dictates. So we're just recommending that the local emergency order be extended, but it's not to a date specific except for it will be designated to whatever the governor chooses as that date. And right now that would be September 4th. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, county managers. Any questions? Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. County manager, you've indicated that you see that Clatsop County is part of a coordinated response. And I think all the commissioners have agreed with that. It's also become apparent that not everybody who lives in Clatsop County agrees with that point of view. I don't expect that we should have to change what we're doing because we are in fact protecting public health and safety while balancing as best we can economic recovery, resilience, function, however you want to say that. Is there anything that you can think of that would help people understand if they're willing to understand why, for example, masks are necessary? Is there anything you think we could do differently that would help people agree to this because they would see the rationale and the effectiveness?
I'm not sure that there's anything that certainly I could say. I think that, that, you know, what is different about this pandemic is that we are all vulnerable to it. It is something that could impact anybody. And so we have to kind of have coordinated movement as a community as we are trying to respond to it. And that coordinated movement most recently has required the governor to really emphasize the requirement for mask wearing. And so, you know, my view is there's just some things we do for each other. It's just the bottom line. It's the gift we give to each other and during a pandemic, we have to be able and be willing to give those gifts. And so I think that there's nothing that we can say to some who may not respond in the same manner. But, you know, I think that what we do know is that, is that the only way we're going to get through this is to act in a coordinated way. And so part of it is that we've seen what happens when we have to construct the community economically and our goal is to not do that and still remain safe. And so, because the consequences of closing down the economy as we saw with the unemployment rate is just devastating. And so, you know, we all have to do our part. I just can't emphasize that enough. And so, you know, there's no magic words, no pixie dust, but we'll just continue to reinforce how it helps all the community remain healthy.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to go on Amazon and see if I can find pixie dust for us.
Okay, Commissioner Nebiker?
Yeah, I know you're all aware of this, but it does, I think maybe this could help. I have, one of my children works with a business and he sees hundreds of thousands of people. And in this business, they are wearing masks. And there are people that come that are very upset, but most people are compliant. This is in Portland. And what he says to them is, if we do this, we can keep our business open and we can keep the economy going so that we don't have to shut down. This is our way to keep commerce going. And he said people kind of shift a little bit sometimes when they hear this. So I don't know if that helps.
Thank you, Commissioner Nebiker. Any other questions for the county manager? Commissioner Quila?
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I just agree with what's been said. I know that I've heard from a number of businesses that are scared to death that we're going to close things down and that the mask was just a step towards closing their doors. And I think that the county manager just stated it fairly well that we're not, we're not, we're doing this because we want to keep businesses open, we want the economy to stay open, and we're simply extending the date.
I would agree with you. Everybody wants things to go forward, so. All right, it looks like, I'll entertain, for some reason it says I'm running out of power, I have it plugged in. Would anyone like to make the motion?
I'll make the motion, Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt the resolution extending the emergency declaration to coincide with the governor's declaration.
Second.
Okay, thank you. I have power now. Okay, any discussion about that motion? Okay, hearing none. Clerk of the Board, may we have the roll call, please, on the adoption, on the motion in front of us to extend the first declaration to coincide with the governor's declaration?
Commissioner Quila?
Aye.
Commissioner Webb?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Nebiker?
Aye.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye. Okay, so the resolution to adopt the extending the emergency declaration coincide with the governor's declaration passes unanimously. And does anyone have, thank you very much, does anyone have anything for the good of the order? Commissioner Nebiker?
I want to apologize for interjecting a comment and not waiting until after the motion. And so, sorry. And also, I did not, I wanted to give the names of the people that I spoke about, my family, in case anybody wants to contribute to any of those charities or just wants to tune into the live stream. So that would be Israel Nebiker and my grandson that's going to be in Orlando running the Jumbotron's and all the advertisements and all of that. His name is Taylor Nebiker. So, and he lives in Astoria. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Commissioner Nebiker. Anyone else for the good of the order?
Just exciting time for the Nebikers.
And I have to give another shout out to my nephew because I am so proud of him. So it's no easy task. They, these kids work for years and years and I'm really proud of them. So, okay, with all of that, let's adjourn the meeting and we will see you next time. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.